March 17th, which is going to be regarding priority setting. And we will start with a roll call. Kathy?
Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think we can get right to it. Do we go to Bob Perault or is Brian going to introduce something first?
No, Bob's going to take lead up.
Okay, good.
Madam Mayor, before that, I was just noticing on your agenda, you do have an item on there for public communications.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. I can't multi-screen on this, so yes, thank you for reminding me. We have a time here for any public comments. This is, I think, mostly for things that aren't on the agenda, but we will definitely take public comments as we go into the meat of tonight's meeting also. So anybody from the public want to address the City Council? I'm not seeing or hearing anything. So now we're going to turn it over to Bob Perault. Thank you for reminding me, Bob.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's indeed a pleasure and I want to thank you all for taking the time on the St. Patrick's Day. Just to note, you'll see that my last name is actually pronounced Perrault. It's a French-Canadian name, but I'm still wearing green in favor of the holidays, so hopefully everyone is having a good one. Anyway, this is a special meeting tonight and it's a part of our goal-setting process that the council actually initiated at the last regular council meeting. And it's got various, a number of different components to it. Just to highlight those again, on Saturday, the council conducted a communications workshop where we talked our way through communication best practices. Anytime that you're about to undertake goal-setting, it's important that you have a healthy communication system. In addition to that, council members have been tasked at this point with coming up with a series of candidate goal statements, what we call candidate goal statements. Essentially, these, I suggested up to five, obviously, it could be a little more, a little less, but the intent of the goal statement is outlining major projects, major tasks that the council would like to suggest for consideration as a candidate goal. Those goal statements are to be, also be supported by implementation steps, which could be a project, et cetera. The purpose of, by the way, those candidate goal statements are due to Brian by the end of the workday tomorrow. So I know it's requiring a lot of focus right now. The purpose of tonight's meeting is essentially to take a look at the status of the city from broad terms and terms of background mostly. What we'll be talking about tonight will be budget projections, you'll hear staffing levels, you'll hear some discussion about challenges and opportunities that may be facing the city, and you'll hear individually from department heads. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to give you additional information and based on what you hear tonight, you may choose to modify your candidate goal statements. It's to try and provide you with the best up-to-date information that we can possibly do. On following the turn-in of the goal statements, the candidate statements, Brian and I will take a look at them on Friday and work to get them into concise, eliminate repetition where it may exist, and try and come up with a list of goals that are pretty representative of what the council communicates. Then on Saturday, we'll meet again in special session, and the purpose of that will be for the council to review the candidate goal statements and to take public input as it may be available and relative to those candidate statements. Following that, as you may have seen with the information that has gone out, we're modifying the process a little bit. We are going to try and encourage public input beyond, well beyond Saturday, to on those candidate goals. In fact, what we're looking at is trying to get a survey out and encourage public comment right up, I think, until about the end of the month. And then we will hold another special meeting if it's convenient to everyone, and at that time, the council will take a look at public input and have an opportunity to rate the candidate goals themselves based on all the information they've received on a scale of one to four. We will then tabulate those scores and return them to the council, and the council will have an additional and final opportunity to create a final goal statement per se that will have all of the listed candidate goals that are going to be considered. And those then would be taken up at a subsequent, final, regular council meeting for approval. At least that's the process as I see it at this point. Are there any questions of me regarding the process and how it's modified at this point from council members? Hearing none, then what we're going to go and proceed with is essentially hearing from Andy. Andy, I haven't had a chance to meet you directly, but Andy, what I'm hoping you'll do is cover projections relative to revenues and expenditures. So Andy, if you're ready, maybe you can pick it up from here. Can't hear you.
We're still not hearing you. Doesn't look like you're muted, but there's no sound.
I don't think he's on there because earlier his name was present, so I'm going to text him.
Well, his picture's up. He's trying to talk and nothing, we're not hearing anything.
He indicated that he's going to call in.
Okay.
Read us a poem, Bob. Yeah, I should. Actually, I have them below me into my laptop.
Make it an Irish one.
Unfortunately, I never wrote one of those. Maybe should have. My favorite poem that I...
Is that a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to actually move away from my computer as I talk. That way, there's no feedback.
That was a problem.
Okay, yeah, you know, with the go-to meeting, something's, there's an issue with my laptop on that, so I'll have to try to figure out what that is. Anyway, what I'd like to do is walk the council through a very baseline forecast I put together based on, for the general fund. If you have seen actually as part of the mid-year document for the preliminary 1920 numbers.
You might want to, I'm sorry to interrupt, you might want to mute your screen because we're still going to keep that.
Okay.
Better.
Okay, sorry about that. Go over the general fund numbers that you've seen before as part of the mid-year that came to you just a few weeks ago for 1920 preliminary and then for 2021. Those numbers haven't changed. And then what I did was I actually looked at where the city is likely to be, assuming your base does not change. So when we talk about a base, you might recall that that means providing the existing levels of service that you provide in the city with the, with the numbers of staff that you have today and with all the programs that you have, what it costs to provide those programs, and then looking at how those programs are ultimately funded under certain assumptions. Okay? So that's what we're looking at for fiscal '21, '22 through fiscal '24, '25, for the next four fiscal years. So the things that I'll call out, and I'm not sure if Kathy can put up the PDF document that has the general fund forecast so that people can see that. But what I'll do is kind of walk through each year, looking at fiscal 1920 preliminarily. You have a surplus. I just checked these numbers again yesterday and it's looking, nothing's really changed. We're still closing the books for 1920, but we're almost there. That $239,000 stems from the fact that we had coronavirus, we had the COVID-19 crisis that affected all communities across the nation, and basically, the city went into don't spend mode. Not a lot of money was spent during fiscal 1920. And on top of that, that is a little, I've got a fire trial. Okay. And on top of that, you had a significant amount of vacancies in cities that accrued because numerous positions, the police department and in the parks and rec department and in the finance department were vacant at some point in time during fiscal 1920. So that amount will accrue as well. Okay? Then when you move into fiscal 2021, the current year, we're looking at mid-year, and I'll just recapitulize what we talked about a couple of weeks ago. That $311,000 deficit is lower than what we originally anticipated, because you might recall what we originally anticipated was a larger deficit that was predominantly because of COVID-19 crisis. That 311 includes one-quarter worth of Measure K that was attributed about $310,000, and includes some adjustments to sales tax and transient occupancy tax that we went over in mid-year. We still projected a deficit. What I will say about that today is that, looking at the numbers yesterday, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and cannabis revenues, that government sort of likely to come in a little bit higher than what is in the mid-year, to the extent of between $200,000 and $300,000. So we might see very close to a balanced budget for fiscal 2021. That might be pretty close if we don't, you know, if we keep in track that the expenditures are budgeted as part of the mid-year. Now, when we move into fiscal '21, '22, and the next three years, some of the things I want to discuss are growth factors. So for property tax, I assume that you'll make about 2% per year. That's the Prop 13 maximum. Properties are growing more because there's huge demand for properties in California right now, and it's likely to come in a little bit higher, but stay on the conservative side, especially for 2%. Most other elements, with the exception of sales tax, are just fixed at what they are today, so when you look at franchise fees, business licenses, permits, and those sorts of things, they didn't increase those in a year or decrease them for that length. When you look at sales tax, I'm using what was put out by Avenue Insights, which is the city's sales tax consultant, for the general sales tax that we receive, which is the 1% that comes into the general fund. And for Measure K, I just used the amount that we receive for the transportation sales tax and extrapolated the amount that will come in for Measure K based on that forecast long-term. Avenue Insights does give us a forecast through '24, '25, so these numbers are right out of their third quarter forecast that they provided the city. Okay? None of these numbers include the recent passage of the American Rescue Plan by the federal government. The city stands to get just over $911,000 in one-time money that will come probably in 60 days, within 60 days, or be available to the city within 60 days, once it applies. And that 9/11 is not part of this at all. What I recommend that the council do is actually look at how to spend that 9/11 within the framework that is being put together right now by the Department of the Treasury on how that money is ultimately to be spent, and then bring that back and have that conversation about how that money will be spent. But the 9/11 is not in here at all. Let's see, I just want to look at my notes real quick. Ultimately, Measure K, you'll have a full year of Measure K in fiscal '21, '22, so you see that 1.45 million, that's about 1.45 million according to Avenue Insights' forecast, but that is built in. And as a result, what you see long-term, again, assuming stopping levels are constant, nobody's added, nobody's taken away, and all positions are filled throughout the entirety of the year, that's what this assumes, you see that starting next year, the city has systemic surpluses of about 823,000, 806,000, and then it comes down to 680 and 650. And the only reason it comes down is because you lose the COPS grant that's funding one of the police officers right now, starting in fiscal 2021 for three years. So you're required to maintain that officer on staff for one more year past that, but what I've done is not assume that that officer goes away. So these numbers basically absorb the loss of that grant in these surpluses. But you can see that because of prominently Measure K, you do have a systemic surplus in the general fund as you move forward. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, and based on the forecast, you know, I'm not going to answer any questions. Keep in mind that when we actually do the budget process, this forecast will be much more robust, look at different line items for revenues in a lot more detail, and then also include the costs of some of the things that the council will have as a result of its goal-setting. So all of that will be built in, but it will be a much more robust forecast. So I will stop there.
So are there?
Okay.
Well, I was just going to ask if there are any questions or, you know, clarifications sought by council members, and then maybe a brief moment, yes, I see Jerry's hand, for public comment too. So Jerry, go ahead.
Andy, obviously, I don't expect it right now, but when you formulate the budget, do you have a better idea on what our PRS hit is going to be either this coming year or the year after, given our, I guess, our contract and all that?
What the PRS cost will be?
That's right.
As you asked. Oh, yeah, absolutely. I will have the exact amount that the city will be paying for PRS. Yeah, that will be part of the expenditure side of the forecast, and those numbers will be taken directly from PRS actuary, which would be the amounts that, we already know what you're going to pay next year, and those will be absolutely in the forecast.
Other questions from council members?
Again, Andy, on the Measure K, which is your sales tax adjustment, the sales tax adjustment alone will yield 1.5 million over and above what you would otherwise have received from sales tax?
About, yes, about, well, I put 300,000 in 2021, so it's another one, about 1.1 million more starting in fiscal '21, '22, then moving forward, yes.
And then one further question regarding the PRS, and if you're not able to give that information at this time, that's fine, and I know it's all done by actuarial, and do you have any idea what the outstanding liability is at this point for PRS?
Not off the top of my head, but as we, as we do this workshop tonight, I will look that up and I will report that in just a little bit tonight.
Great, appreciate it.
And Greta?
Andy, I just wanted to, just to clarify for myself, you mentioned the COPS grant and how that's worked into the projections for the next few years, but I also wanted to verify that the recent positions that we've approved, the admin services coordinator, the new sergeant, public works director, the promotion of the HR analyst to manager, all of those are also included in these projections? Is that correct?
No. So this assumes the mid-year number, so any costs that have been recently absorbed will be, will be updated in the next forecast, but I failed to mention, for the expenditures in the forecast that's in front of you, is all expenditures grow by 2% per year. So I just did a flat amount of 2% per year for the entire expenditure base moving forward. So the expenditure base is going to be, you know, roughly five and a half, six million dollars. So there's an additional 2% that's built in every year for that. So you've got, you know, $100,000 to $120,000 in increasing expenditures for each year as well.
Okay, but that wouldn't necessarily cover annual raises?
It does not. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members or staff? Any questions from the public? And seeing and hearing none, back to you, Bob.
Okay, at this point, we're going to move along and hear from Brian, who will pick up with administration. Brian?
Yep, so just tagging on from what Andy's comments were, you know, what I want to just present to the council tonight in advance of goal-setting is kind of what I've seen as, you know, a large-scale roadmap of items that I think the council needs to consider during goal-setting and as we move or transition into budget for '21, '22. I think the budget's going to be an interesting effort this year, going with what we just heard about the Measure K funding and some other provisions that are in there. You know, this is a new opportunity for the city to look, take a comprehensive look at expenditures as well as looking at that revenue coming in and making some wise decisions. We keep hearing that we don't want to misspent that Measure K. I think that's an obligation that we have made to the public and to the organization as well. So it's going to be interesting putting that budget together for next fiscal year and continuing that out during projections for the following fiscal years. Associated with the budget drafting, we're going to be putting together a capital improvements plan to look at what we're going to be using enterprise funds for, for infrastructure upgrades, as well as looking at long-term projects. Traditionally, the city's been looking at projects in a one- or two-year cycle and been able to fund those within a one- or two fiscal years, but we're looking at working with the budget process to set aside reserves for some larger projects that hopefully would be scoped during the goal-setting session and put forward in the near future as well. Also, in a line with those two items, the capital improvements plan, the budget, is looking at a strategic operational plan, and that's really going to focus on staffing, where we are with current staffing level, the job descriptions, and how they fit into, you know, are we overstaffed in one area, are the staff, are we having the right skill sets in the right position? So I think that's all tied back to budget and long-term fiscal resiliency for the organization. And then from there, associated with finances, the actual, the finance department, we're a little, we have staffing gaps there. Andy's been filling in tremendously. We have a commitment from him, but that commitment has a sunset on it unfortunately. So we need to look at, you know, bringing in some talent in that realm of the organization as well as the executive level, as well as support staff as a component to that. And associated with the finance department, we're going to have to be looking at upgrades to IT, and that's really looking at utility billing software, payroll software, tying that all together. That's going to be some capital expenses that are going to be put into the budget. It's going to be a little painful, but I think it's going to sit as well as we move forward. And then we're looking at some items I think can come out later in our goal-setting, which is actually what we want to do with the building itself, City Hall. I think we can make some improvements structurally to the facility as well as internally, improve its usability both for meeting the community's needs as well as the council and the organizations within our building space here. So those are some items that I have identified, and I wanted to put that out there tonight as we move forward with goals. Questions?
I have a question. We had in the past looked at the possibility of the county, what do you call it, the Justice Center. Is that off the table? What's happened with the Justice Center?
I'm not saying it's off the table. I would like to consider it. I think there's merit to that discussion. We have not, I have not gone to county, you know, asking what their interest in that building is. We all know they have vacated that building. They have, we've been correcting them on the deferred maintenance, trying to get their attention back into that building. It does have some space that we could utilize, and it would be a nice complement to our center here. We could make the community center focus on the building and then adjacent to the park. We have the, you know, the ingredients for a perfect community node, so I would like to throw that out there as well for the council to consider for expansion of community facilities.
Other questions for Brian? Yes, Bob?
Yeah, Brian, I know you've only been here a couple of months now, and you're doing a great job, but during that time, and given what you've already mentioned, can you see any challenges other than those that you've identified that, from even the community's perspective, that perhaps the council will need to deal with? And in addition to that, is there any opportunities that you've seen or been able to identify thus far?
Well, I think we're still with COVID. You know, we're transitioning from one tier to another, and hopefully we can continue in that path, but there's still that likelihood or a possibility of a surge or, you know, backtrack on the tiers and having more restrictions. So, you know, we've been operating like most municipalities in isolation for a year now, and we've been having internal discussions about potentially how we open, physically open and accommodate the public. So that's going to be a challenge as well, and it's going to be a learning curve. I don't think some members of the public are going to be willing to jump back into public meetings, so we're going to have to accommodate them and also have to convey to the public that, you know, with the correct measures in place, it could be safe to reconvene and take part in the decision-making process. So I think that's one item. An opportunity is that federal stimulus money that, as Andy mentioned, the $900,000, I think that is an opportunity. We have about three, three-and-a-half years to utilize that for specific needs. I think that's something we're going to be moving to start to consider. You know, and the community as well is what, I guess I'm a little, you know, unfortunately with COVID, haven't been able to get out there, but, you know, I think there's opportunities to, with the community, look at place-making, forming stronger identity of the community through engagement with communities and looking at how we can direct resources to certain areas of the community. So that's how I would sum it up.
If I could, if I could, Brian, this is Andy Eaton again, just add one more basic challenge that could be an opportunity as well, and that is what challenge that could be an opportunity as well, and that is what Councilmember Gonzalez talked about a little bit earlier tonight, that's your pension liability and how that might be funded in the future. There's opportunities right now with interest rates being what they are, which are very low, to look at options for financing that pension liability into a fixed cost instrument where you're not subject to the whims of CalPERS, at least for the existing liability that you have moving forward. So I think one opportunity that might exist is really addressing how those CalPERS liabilities might be funded to significantly mitigate the challenge that they pose for future budgets.
Greta?
Yes, Andy brought up a great point there, so, you know, I, you know, I want to start this conversation so that, you know, we can, I want to fixate on the negative or, you know, the items that we need to address, and a negative might think is a great thing, the council is heavily engaged and wants to move the organization and community forward, and, you know, what we, what I would like to do is that goal-setting session is really set up solid foundation so we can look at future challenges and opportunities with a clear vision and handle them straight on.
Greta?
I just wanted to comment that it seems to me, something I've observed over the last two years, is that insurance costs, the jumps, the big jumps in insurance costs definitely has been a challenge, and I wonder if there's any way we can identify an opportunity to plan for those or rein them in, or any creative thinking we can do to try to mitigate that challenge? Just wanted to put that in everyone's head.
There are some things you can do, I mean, you could, there's some mitigation elements you can add to the organization, education, different awareness, and just create a solid work environment where, you know, that liability is removed, but that's a hard, you know, that's a hard thing to address, formulate into, you know, numbers, you know, check numbers, at least in my experience, but it's my fault, that's something we need to consider. Karen, sure want to...
Well, I'm just going to say, I think on the 20th day, we go to a reunion meeting where we're going to be talking about insurance, and it is a big week, so it's not just going to be medical insurance, but where we are with the next fiscal year's rate, so.
You're spot on, Greta.
And there's no other questions from council, and opportunity for the public has a question? And if not, back to Bob.
Okay, and Paul, just a matter of a comment on the insurance issue as well, as most of you know, you're a member of the insurance pool, and your rates have a lot to do with your past experience, as with any kind of an insurance program, to the extent that you're able to adopt policies and procedures that will help in the future to limit that experience, it's always worth consideration. With that, I think Karen, if I'm not mistaken, you're going to cover staffing?
Well, I think Brian actually already already mentioned it, some of the goals for HR was to make sure we get full-time, boots-on-the-ground finance director, it'd be pretty hard to match what Andy's able to provide at this moment, but we are also looking for a public works director, those are, and then a full-time permanent police chief, which, you know, we hope to have a good, solid candidate by May. Some of the other recruiting, we have a couple of internal, we have three internal positions that we are going to try to fill, and as well as our police, so it's really hard to find good quality candidates, it's hard to attract when we, our housing is not the best, let alone our salaries, but we all learned through our total compensation study, our benefits right now surpass those of our surrounding sister cities, so, you know, it's just getting people interested in what we have to offer, but we do, my goal is to make sure that we can fill some positions with quality candidates before the end of the calendar year. And then also, you know, I want to ensure that we could adopt and we complete successful negotiations with both of our unions, I'd like to result in win-win outcome. One of the other things that I have is we sorely need to update our personnel procedures and policies because it has not been moved by, placed in 2009, and some of the things are outdated, so those are my goals.
Madge, if you don't mind, I've got a clarification question.
I think you should just go ahead and kind of be the chair for this, because you're going to call on, go ahead.
Karen, in terms of negotiation, so are you on single-year or multi-year contracts, and are they both coming through this year?
We have two contracts, they're both three years, yes, they're both due this year, the POA expires at the end of June, and the IBW expires the end of December. What we are trying to do, which we felt was very successful the last time, was doing concurrent negotiation, because we get a little bit more bang for our buck if we have to have him drive here, but we're going to try to do a lot of it vis a vis, and cut down on expenses, and make it, we'd like to start early bargaining, typically we would start in early April and waited to hear back from our consultant, I would like to use Patrick Clark again, he was excellent, very well respected, very up to date with, you know, what's going on, and actually gets along very well with the union's negotiating partners, so.
It's Greta?
Karen, a couple of times I have heard you mention the desire and need to update job descriptions, particularly those positions where one person is filling really multiple job titles but doesn't have the title or the description to recognize at workload, is that something on your goal list for the next year, or is that, you know, three years out, five years out, I'm just wondering how that fits into your, your planning?
That's a good question, I'm actually in the middle of doing it now, because we had incorporated, we just kept adding stuff, so I am in the process of doing that now, meeting with my peers to find out, you know, what do they really do, and sometimes we take on tasks for short term that becomes long term, so I want to make sure that our job descriptions are accurate and reflecting it, and then we are seeing our consultants that did the compensation study to really look at the revised job descriptions and see if she can come up with a different result, because we're not going to get more people to do the work, it's, you know, what kind of work are we doing, are we doing it efficiently, is there something that we're doing that maybe we could get rid of? No, just because we've always done it may not be effective, but just giving an accurate reflection, I would like to have those job descriptions ready to go by bargaining time. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, what's next?
Next is community development, Dusty?
Thank you, Bob, Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. I just want to make note that I am very much Irish, and it's seven o'clock, and I've had no alcohol yet, and if Karen and Brian, if you could make note of that for my next evaluation, as proof of my dedication to my job. Okay, having said that, community development department, we were made up of three divisions, the planning division, the building division, and the co-supports division. When I first got here, it was myself as the city planner, and then John Sherman as our building official at the time. The council, in my humble opinion, when we were not in the best budget time, made the decision to invest in both an assistant planner and a community development specialist, both Michelle Johnson and Jim Robbins. We, Michelle handles the majority of current planning applications and processing, as well as running the cannabis program, and, you know, we are able to process this applications in a timely fashion, especially relative to other jurisdictions. The cannabis program, in my opinion, has been successful, part of that is that we're able, especially Michelle, to give them personal attention, they can get ahold of us, get an answer, we're very flexible about, just like we are with other businesses, of trying to do our best to make common sense work and stay within the rules of course, and that's likely allowed us to both retain cannabis businesses as well as attract new ones to the, to the community, and I think that can be true for other business types as well. But without Michelle, I don't know that we would have had, and in that investment by the council, I don't know that we would have had as successful a cannabis program as we do, and the cannabis businesses are our highest-taking business taxpayers in the city by quite a bit actually. We also are running a grant program that maybe is unmatched compared to other years in the city, and that wouldn't have happened without the investment in the position that ultimately Jim Robbins filled, so, you know, things are going very well on those fronts, and those additional positions, in my opinion again, have paid off for the city. As far as additional tools that could be helpful to us, we do not have GIS services, so this is map making, this is maintaining your database of the city infrastructure, now we've created a GIS layer for our city maintained trees as part of developing the urban forestry management plan, it would allow us to update zoning maps and general planning maps whenever we complete rezoning, you know, develop hazard maps, custom mapping available to us during emergency incidences, so I just will note that, you know, it is a challenge not having that service available to the city currently, and we may want to consider contracting out those services that we have that tool built. Also looking at re-establishing the interim program with Humboldt State University and see if we can't get one of the talented planning students to once again spend their summer with us and assist us with catching up on some lower-level tasks, as well as introducing them to some of the more exciting parts of the planning profession. We're also looking at developing an on-call consultant list to sit staff with the processing and stock recovery project, so just, I was just trying to give you a quick overview of the staffing in the community development department and how things are going there. So I think I'm supposed to maybe talk about some opportunities and constraints for some important matters for the city. We have an opportunity to create new housing and attract experienced housing developers to build, whatever level and type of housing that's consistent with the desire of the council and community. You know, I, everyday housing affordability, lack of available housing for my kids, it's hard to find a rental, businesses are complaining about hiring well-compensated employees, but they quit three months later because they can't find anywhere to rent or attract the housing in their price range. So, you know, it seems like the, if, you know, the idea of building housing could solve a number of problems for the city, and, you know, there's an opportunity, and I've spoken to the council, and also the opportunity I'm given to try to push that idea forward, and to the council's credit, you know, I think that's understood loud and clear, but the constraint is our general plan is outdated, the last time our general plan, including the land use element that was comprehensively updated, was 1992, which doesn't seem like that long ago until you do the math. You know, the general plan, it's the blue plan, it's the blueprint for any city's development, it sets forth our development policies, the objectives, the standards, it's often called the constitution for the city or the constitution for all future development. You know, we're looking at proceeding with the expansion of the city limits through an SOI update, and, you know, certainly that's a costly and time-consuming mission to go on. Today, staff has received $160,000 in SB2 grant funding, we just signed another grant agreement for $60,000 that was awarded through the local early action program last week, and then we've made applications through MPOC for regional early action planning funds, expect to get another $35,000 and change here in the very near future. So if you add it all together, it's something about $255,000 in grants that we've collected, and we're going to put a request or proposal out and seek a consultant assistance with not only looking at a comprehensive update to our existing zoning maps and zoning designations within the city, but we're also going to look at pre-zoning lands subject to our sphere of influence update, and again, there'll be, you know, community meetings and an opportunity for the council to dive in and provide that necessary input to shape how you want to see any growth and development occur. But again, it's, the point being is that, you know, we talk about the housing, but really without the general plan update, without entering into a tax sharing agreement with the county, you know, then really, we're really not talking about getting this done without confirming to getting the general plan updated, but the good news is, is we're off to a good start with the $255,000 in grant funds, and my hope is, is that's going to either cover it or get us, you know, pretty close to getting the product that we want and need to move forward with creating these new housing opportunities. The other, the other big opportunity that comes with constraints that I wanted to mention to council was the community development block grant program. That program provides a plethora of opportunities for the type of improvement that I believe this city needs and wants. It can be anything from developing parkland, to developing a new community center, to developing low-income housing, you know, business rehab, it's all there. The constraint, and it's a very big one, is that you have limited staff in both the community development department and even more so than in the finance department, and, you know, none of your city staff have experience with dealing with community development block grant funds. We're hoping to get that experience somewhat, and it's very much a toe-dipping exercise with these over-the-counter CDB funds and creating this business revolving loan fund, and even then, you know, staff only recommended that action to council because we were able to obtain the services of Jeff Lucas, who's a superhero of a consultant in the CDBG world, and we at least have a vertical agreement, and we're working on a contract with EDST to provide, you know, underwriting and administrative services so that it really limits the amount of our staff time that's going to need to be spent on the program. So, you know, really, we need to continue to develop those partnerships, you know, we need to continue to, you know, rely on consultants, but, you know, there may be, you know, some initial upfront investments that the city would need to make, but again, you know, that represents... Um, but again, you know, that represents, uh, a significant opportunity for the city to receive funds and, and get some good projects out of it. So, uh, those are the, the two big things that, that I wanted to mention. Um, and I, and I, and I believe there'll be more time on Saturday to, to talk about, um, you know, the, the various goals that the, the department has, but, uh, it seemed, hopefully it was appropriate to discuss these, these two items tonight. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Definitely appropriate. Now I see Karen's hand.
Thank you for that report, Dusty. Um, this is not the first time that you have mentioned a need and desire to update the general plan. Um, I, I wanted to comment that we, I think the council over the last couple of years has gotten the message pretty loud and clear that your department is, um, um, I won't say bogged down, but, but definitely heavily loaded with, um, grant project, um, management now at this point. There was a big push for grant attainment and now we moved into a period of time where you need to manage all of these various projects that have been started. So I'm wondering, with your current staff, do you see it even within the realm of possibility to tackle a general plan update? And if so, how does that fit into your current workload?
Yeah, so the, the update of the general plan is, is, is heavy lifting. So, so even when you have, you know, adequate resources and you're spending hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants, it's, it's still like a two or three year process. And, and that would be a fast process. So, you know, realistically, it's, it's not something that you're going to push on to current staff. If you did, it would, it would be, and I'm not trying to be dramatic or, you know, oversell it, but you're probably, that, that would be all that we were doing and everything else would, would suffer from it. Uh, you're probably, it's something like 90% of your time is spent dealing with a, a comprehensive update to the general plan. So, uh, what we have been doing and, you know, and, and has been successful in is, uh, either obtaining grant funds or your staff has been limiting the cost of the consultants by taking on, you know, a portion of it themselves. That was for updating the housing element twice and then we'll have the safety element coming in front of you shortly. We're also going to hopefully use this $255,000 to do, and I don't know if it's just going to be, you know, majority update to the zoning maps or if there's going to be an opportunity to actually do an update to the land use element. Um, but, you know, council member Connie, you know, really it, it's not a, I, I think what we're trying to do is save up our money to hire outside help to assist in that project. And it's not something that we could realistically fully push on to your current staff.
Thank you. Um, I think that's a excellent point and probably something that we would need to then set as a goal for a timeline on when we'll have that money to start such a project. Because like I said, this has come up a few times, but if we never start, we'll never start. So we have to set it as a goal so that we can actually figure out a time to make that happen.
Thank you.
And Sabrina?
Madge, Dusty, would, in your, uh, in a perfect world, would you envision that the city would invest in additional, uh, onsite staff, like the general plan projects? Or would you see a better suited, uh, to be contracted out, project by project?
When, when you're going through a concrete, uh, update of a, of a general plan, it, it wouldn't, you're, I don't think having one, one additional person work on it would be, would, but allow us to accomplish the task within, in, within like a two or three year timeframe. Um, I would, I would want to talk to others that have gone through that process to, to give you a definitive answer. Um, but I, I, I understand the question, I just, I don't know, I don't know if just having one, one person would be enough.
I understand what you're saying because it involves so many different departments. You couldn't just hire a new person with a specialty, for example, in planning or so forth, because, uh, you, you really need, uh, the support of several different departments. Is that correct?
The, the general plans that I've seen that I like that took, you know, relatively short amount of time, meaning, meaning two or three years, was developed with a, a team of people. Um, you know, you didn't have a single author. Um, you know, you, you, again, you had a, a full consultant team made up of, um, you know, all, all type of different professions that, that ultimately put something like that together. So it, it would, it would certainly be a, um, a, a, a extremely difficult task for, for me to try to take on myself. Um, and, and obviously there's, there's more experienced and, and well-versed planners out there that would have a better shot at it, but, uh, I've never, never seen that, that approach. And my assumption is, is that it would be, it would be way more involved than, than one individual could take on and get it done in a, you know, acceptable amount of time. Uh, I just want to add as well, if, if a community is going to take on, um, you know, a general plan update or the maintenance of the general plan on a daily basis, I think you would have to restructure community development. I think as Dusty noted, um, you're looking at, you have staff now that are covering grant and community development work as well as current planning, which is land use approvals and permitting. Um, but you don't have the staff right now in-house to do long-range planning and maintaining. Uh, and that's a big thing with planning documents is that it might be easy to attain and accomplish and get it adopted, but you also need talent in-house to see them implemented and follow through and maintain on a regular basis. So you're not looking at a third year update and, and scratching your head trying to figure out how you're going to fund it.
I have, uh, a couple of questions on this. One of them is, um, I've, I've never really imagined that you do the zoning, um, fairly comprehensive zoning, um, analysis and, and, you know, update without the general plan, land use element updated. It seems like it's the cart before the horse. So that was one question. And then it may be related too, but, um, I'm kind of wondering about what is the sequence to get us to a point where we could, um, do an annexation, which would open up some really good housing opportunities? Because we have these different parts of it. Um, the, you know, the sphere of influence, the, the tax share agreement. Um, I'd love to see a kind of, um, um, two or three year projection of how we can get from where we are now to accomplishing those things in, in a sequential way. The, um, the annexations, the rezonings, general plan, land use element at least. Um, and, and it's, for me, that's a really high priority. I think all, all of those things are high priority. So I guess that's sort of a question and a...
Yeah, no, I, I got some questions and they, and they were good questions, Mayor. Um, so, uh, we, we have the 255,000 or at least we anticipate getting the, the additional $35,000 through, through the, through the re, regional early action planning grant fund. Uh, and then with that $255,000, ideally what we're hoping to accomplish is a, um, comprehensive update of the land use element as well as the general plan and zoning map. Uh, in addition, looking at pre-zoning the areas subject to, uh, whatever SOI update application that we decide to, to make to LAPCO. Um, what you, what you caught there in my earlier comments and you were, um, and I'm glad that you asked this question is, uh, it's yet to be determined whether that's going to be enough money to accomplish all those tasks. And so it may be that our review and update of the land use element, um, could, would need to be minimalized to some extent. Certainly, you know, everything else, you know, your zoning ordinance always needs to be consistent with your general plan, your development, you know, all the actions of the city need to be consistent with the general plan, including the land use element. Um, but it, uh, I recognize that depending on, um, what, what the, the, the proposals come back at, maybe that we're, we're not getting that ideal land use element update. Um, but certainly we, we need to update it to a point that it provides that consistency and direction for the, for the pre-zoning and, uh, any, any other amendments we want to make to our, our existing zoning here in the city. Um, as far as the steps go for, for full annexation of the land in the city, which, which would then would allow us to extend water and sewer services out and we would retain zoning control and, and have the ability to, um, to set up the development process for, for, for any new housing or other land uses we would want to see. What, uh, what we need to do is, is complete the environmental review, uh, component, uh, showing, you know, what, what the impact of, of, of development, however we pre-zone that land would, would, would be on the environment, as, as well as understanding how it would, would impact the existing city limits, whether it's our, you know, water, water infrastructure or, or, or impact to, to our roads. Um, and, uh, with the environmental review component completed and the pre-zoning completed, that would allow us to make application to LAPCO, uh, for a sphere of influence update. Um, you know, LAPCO certainly would, would need to, to approve that and, you know, they, they have the certain things that, that they need to look for that, you know, that, that you studied how it's going to affect the environment, that you studied how it's going to, um, you know, i- impact, uh, the existing city infrastructure. They want to know that you have the ability to, to maintain that land. They want to ensure that you have, uh, water and sewer services available to support that development. But with all those things at hand, you know, you would expect LAPCO to, uh, to approve a sphere of influence. But again, even after spending the $255,000, even going through all the time to, to get public input and to update your land use elements, to pre-zone the land, um, to invest in infrastructure, to get an SOI approved by LAPCO, that could all mean nothing if you don't have a tax sharing agreement with, with the county. Because without the tax sharing agreement, you cannot annex that, that, that land in the sphere of influence. So that becomes an extremely important part of this process. And, you know, um, and, and part of that is why I'm, I'm thankful to be sharing with the council that we're raising $255,000 in grant funds to support the environmental work because I still have to be concerned with, you know, the fact that all of this is for naught if we don't have a tax sharing agreement with, with the county. Um, because the reality is, is if, if that process goes on for 10 years, well, a lot of this environmental work might be outdated and, and a lot of it would have to be repeated and that money would need to be spent again. So, um, but anyways, I've been a little further beyond the question asked. But yeah, Mayor, I hope, I hope that, um, better defines the steps that, that we need to take in order to get to the full annexation.
Um, I guess a question to Brian also. Is, uh, this $911,000, can any of that go towards any of these sort of things or is that earmarked for other stuff?
Question mark. Uh, so right now it's earmarked for, um, uh, community assistance related to COVID, uh, retrofitting buildings, providing assistance to the community. Uh, and it's also looking at infrastructure and they have identified waters, sewer, storm sewer upgrades and also upgrades to community facilities. It would be interesting if we could stretch it for planning efforts. Uh, right now, you know, no one really knows the answers and so there might be a possibility.
Um, so I'm sorry, we, I wanted to share any other questions from council members? And I am not seeing any, any questions from the public about Dusty's, um, community development is a big subject. So, um, we will undoubtedly revisit it. To you, Bob.
Okay, Madge. Uh, now we're going to go to engineering. So Rod, I guess you're up.
Well, this is Jeremy.
Oh, Jeremy, okay.
Andrea's on too. I think Rod's on too. Uh, but I don't, uh, you know, any of us can answer these questions, I guess. Uh, basically engineering function is to, you know, provide engineering services to other city departments, um, for public projects. And I think our big function is to, uh, develop, um, projects for the city, um, road projects and utility projects. We have a, a healthy list of projects and we have, uh, previous council direction for a lot of those as far as prioritization. Um, I guess we could look at reprioritizing those. I, I think our main challenge is really just kind of getting to projects. Um, we've been without a public works director for five years now. Um, filling that position would certainly help. Um, I think another, another thing that's a big, a big challenge in the last two years has been the encroachment permits. Uh, they, they have increased dramatically, um, and especially from large utility companies, from large utility projects, that, that's become a real, um, it's, it's by far the thing that I spend the most of my personal time on. Andrea spends some time on it too. I mean, that's really increased, um, and, and it's taken away from our ability to get to some of the other things. Um, but for the most part, you know, we try very hard to just focus on projects. Uh, that, we feel like that's, that's what the city wants us to do and, and that's what we try very hard to do. Uh, I don't know if you have anything to add, Andrea?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think along with, uh, the encroachment permits, we, we have a number of things that, that have been sort of added to, um, to our department's, uh, list of things that, that previously part of public works administration, but as that, that department, um, kind of went away, um, they, they've fallen onto, to engineering. So we also manage the landfill. Um, we've recently acquired the solar array and that takes some, some maintenance. Um, uh, and assisting with, with our discharge permits and, um, and there's some small fog permit administration. Um, there, there are several tasks like that, 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 uh, that we manage as well. Um, so, you know, it's just sort of an accumulation of, of things that, that take us away from, from projects. Um, and, you know, as Jeremy said, I do think a public works director would, would help significantly with that. Do you have anything to add, Rod, or?
Sorry, I wasn't, I couldn't find the mute button. And Jeremy and Andrea and I talked before, uh, before this to go over, uh, some of the goals and, and considering the current, the current situation, uh, for public works overall. Um, I think Jeremy touched on it there a bit. Um, with, uh, prioritization of projects that seems really important right now and getting some traction and, and moving forward some of the, some of the infrastructure challenges. Um, and any, any road project or road improvement project, uh, is going to involve, uh, both water, wastewater, um, you know, and, and storm drains. Um, I think it's, uh, once you decide to work on a road project, it grows because you have all the utility... it grows because you have all the utilities that have to be repaired at the same time. And, uh, sometimes that can, that can push a project back if it's not planned correctly. And, um, right now, I know there are, there are a lot of projects on the list that are, that are being worked on and, um, really putting together, uh, like, um, the, the capital improvement plan and, uh, coming up with, uh, uh, you know, a three-year, a three-year plan and, and a much longer term plan. I know Brian has, has asked for, uh, further outlooks than that, which I think is fantastic. And, um, in, in general, I've, just from, from my perspective, uh, I have, you know, some interaction every week. Um, it, there's been a noticeable, a noticeable improvement in, um, communication and, uh, I would say morale as well. So that's a, definitely a positive.
I see Greta and Suprema both have something to add. So Greta?
Um, hello, engineering. Um, thank you for the update. Um, I have a question about the encroachment permits. Um, do you think that these are increasing because of or related to the relinquishment? Or are these encroachment permits happening all around the city? And if that's the case, is it because of delayed maintenance by these large utility companies? And it's something that we can expect to be ongoing for the next few years? What is your take on, on why that's happening?
Yeah, I, oh, sorry, Rod, go ahead if you want. Uh, I would just say from, just real quickly, not dealing with, not specifically what Jeremy's been dealing with a lot lately. Uh, this is across the board. From what I'm hearing, the city of Eureka is having the same challenges with, it's sounding like, most likely like it's deferred maintenance, that some of the things that have happened recently, um, utility companies are pushing to, pushing to, to right the ship and, and catch up on some of the things that, that maybe they've neglected over time. But go ahead, Jeremy.
No, that was going to be my guess too. You know, yeah, there are a couple of additional permits for sure due to us taking on Main Street. And I know also that a couple people waited until we took on Main Street to, to, you know, do their projects, which, you know, is understandable. The, the encroachment permit process of Caltrans is really cumbersome and I get it. And, and we probably will have a little more because of Main Street. But yeah, I, I think utility companies have definitely up their maintenance, um, due to the fires. And I do think they also have deferred maintenance on gas mains because it doesn't sound like this is the last of, for example, the PG&E gas mains replacements. Um, so I, I would tentatively predict that we're going to be dealing with more, um, permits for the foreseeable future. That, you know, that's, that's my feeling.
So I recognize that this is probably asking the impossible, um, because, you know, you're talking about PG&E. But is, is there any, any sense that they would have like a master schedule of what they have intended for, you know, for instance, gas main projects in Willetts so that you could coordinate that with them? So you weren't, for instance, doing a street project in Willetts one year and then having the next summer PG&E come in and rip up your new street to replace a gas main? Is there any coordination possible?
I would love there to be. They, the, we've, we've shared our, um, paving plan and outlook with them previously. I've asked them for their, um, for their plan. They, they don't seem to want to give it to us, but they definitely want ours and they, it's a giant, uh, it's a giant company. So there, there, you know, I think there's people in there that try to coordinate it, but they don't, they don't coordinate things within their own company very well. Uh, so it, it seems like stuff slips through the cracks quite a bit there.
It just hasn't happened. It just, there's been, uh, Jeremy's been trying for, I don't know how long, a couple of years now, uh, to get PG&E to, to, it doesn't seem to make a difference what information is provided to any of the utility companies. Doesn't affect their scheduling. Um, and they'll surprise, they'll surprise you with a new project very short, very short time after you've gotten a recent update on, as to their schedule, they're like, oh yeah, we forgot. We want, we want to tear this road up too. Um, so what we've been talking about is a, uh, uh, policy change and a little more, um, I guess, a little more, uh, teeth behind the requirements to, to repair the road. Um, as far as, if the, if the road was just paved last year and you come in and tear up a section and you have to essentially repave that road, that, that was, yeah, that's, that's kind of an extreme example. But that, uh, given the amount of work that's being done, um, and, you know, their investment, and the city's investment in, in repairing the roads, I think, I think it's warranted and I think it's reasonable to ask them to do a little more than patch the trench or, um, you know, do a little wider patch sometimes. So I think that's the direction that they should consider.
Um, I saw Suprema's hand up and then Jerry has all this his hand after that.
Yeah, I had two questions and one was partially what Greta had asked. Um, I've had complaints from citizens about, uh, a, a new road that had just gotten repaired and utilities came in and tore it up and wanting to know what the city can do to, to hold them accountable for putting the road back in the same state. Um, the other question I have is, uh, on the financial side. I heard, um, Taryn talking about how we're actively working to hire a public works director. And I just want to make sure my understanding is correct, that we do already have that, uh, in the budget? So I'm, I'm just looking for some clarification around the, uh, the financing of that position.
Yeah, did you, uh, you want to answer that? Was the, was a public works director included in these budget projections yet? Oops. Can't hear you. Maybe we'll come back to.
Let, let me, let me, let me check on that real quick. I'll find out.
Okay, thank you. And then Jerry, why don't you go ahead? I think your other question, Suprema, was, was answered in response to, uh, yeah, to Greta's concern.
I agree, we need to hold them accountable. Jerry?
Got one of mine, but my other one is for encroachment permits, uh, again, for Jeremy or Rod. Is there a way, since it seems to be kind of a ministerial function, that we could contract the service that could assist engineering this? Even though we might oversee it, but is there something out there that's reasonable that could help us? I'm assuming they do that in other places, but I, I don't know what's up there.
That's exactly one of the things we've been talking about. Um, trying to just outsource maybe at least the big, um, utility company permits. But you know, the, we, we don't want to do something where we're imposing too much on just, you know, somebody trying to force a sidewalk in front of their house. You know, I'd like to try to still handle those in-house, but the bigger utility company ones, absolutely. I would love to try to find a way to get a third party consultant or something and, because they just require more attention than I have time for. It's just, you could really spend all your time just on the PG&E ones alone. They're really bad to go.
And, and what we're hoping to, um, to get in place is, is potentially a, um, a cost recovery system on, on those larger projects.
That's, yeah, right. That's the important part of it, that being able to get them to pay for that service, so it's a project specific outsourced. It's no money, no money, no cost to the city. There will be some oversight, obviously, the city will have to maintain. But, um, uh, given the, given the, the, the number and duration and there's, there's night work, uh, it's, it's, it's virtually impossible for the city to cover it.
Uh, Larry, do you have any questions or comments here?
No, I don't.
I have, um, two, two questions for engineering. Um, one of them, oh, actually, this is for Andy while you're checking on this. Uh, we projected at one point how much extra it is going to cost us to now take on Main Street maintenance now that it's been relinquished. Um, and it includes the traffic light, but also budgeting for repaving, you know, every whatever number of years. And I, I remember it being like three or four hundred thousand a year, I think. But I, I don't recall right offhand. I'm wondering if that's built in at all to our budget? And if not, it should be.
So I'm not sure if the relinquishment costs typically or the cost to, to maintain resulting from relinquishment are built into the budget per se. Um, I'd have to go back and look at that in more detail. I don't remember that being built in if it was. And engineering may have a better answer on that. Uh, as far as the public works director is concerned, the, the public works director is not funded, uh, in the current budget. So with that in mind, however, one note I will make about the public works director positions typically are funded and by a majority of other funds other than the general fund. So you have your water fund, your sewer fund, and you have a plethora of capital activity that's funded by various sources other than the general fund that will typically go to degrade the cost of the federal works director. So funding that's not going to be a challenge per se with, with budget, um, given some of the fund balances, you have funds, yourself, salt, education, water, sewer, et cetera. Um, and it will be minimal refund from the general. Got that?
So I just want to echo what Andy was thinking. Is that the public works director position would be one of those split positions where most of that, uh, funding to support it would be from general funds and other, uh, revenue that's coming in? So yes, it would take away from some of those fund balances that may, uh, you know, remove potential funding for projects or outlays, but, you know, once again, if that's a patterned investment, the council would be making it to the organization.
Suprema, you had a follow-up? Go ahead.
I did. And the reason I asked that question is that I don't, I'm not disagreeing with the fact that we need a public works director, but I, I was a little confused when Karen was talking about how we were hiring for a public works director. And I didn't recall that being something that we had approved in the budget or that we've seen come forward as a budget amendment. I was just looking for some clarity.
This is Karen and I apologize. I, I thought I said that was one of my goals, was to fill this position. Um, not necessarily are we actively searching for it. Um, it was actually taken out of the budget the, the prior year. Uh, we haven't had one for a while, even though it was budgeted prior. But that's, that's the goal that we need is to get that position. So if I missed something? So for clarification, the only position that is currently being recruited is the police chief, chief of police, uh, that is at that level of, uh, financial commitment by the organization. The other ones that we can talk about, uh, tonight are for, uh, you know, goals, wish lists, uh, opportunities which we have identified that we would like to fulfill. We don't have the exact plan yet, but we haven't made any decisions on hiring them yet. So.
Go ahead, Suprema.
Yeah, uh, Karen, thanks for the clarification. I didn't want to make an assumption, so I figured it was supposed to ask because I'm keeping track, like many other council members are, of what the needs are and I want to make sure that I understood. So thank you.
Sure, no problem. But I am seeking, I am actively seeking, um, staffing for the police department. We, you know, we had, we had a recruitment for our sergeant and a police officer for a while. And, uh, now that you guys have left, um, the ability to maybe forego a police officer and have a sergeant, that is, um, that, that and a police chief are the only thing that we're actively applying for externally.
So my other question for, for engineering, um, what would it take? Well, I, I guess I should say, um, I've long thought it would be a good idea to try to reduce our fossil fuel consumption, which includes electricity, um, at the sewage treatment plant, which I think is one of our heaviest electricity users in the whole city budget. And I realize that's a general fund cost, but I'm wondering the impact and, and whether it's feasible at all to revisit either solar or cogeneration or whatever at the sewage treatment plant to reduce our fossil fuel impact? What that would take?
I was going to let it, Ray, I answer this question. Uh, I think it's, it's possible. I know we, we went, we went quite a ways down this road in 2015, 2016. Um, and then it, then it, it is just, um, it just died. So I don't recall, I do recall some of the specifics, but we don't need to go into the details, but, um.
Yeah, I, so, all right, just to, to pin, um, I, you know, it is, it is on the, on the horizon and, and a project that, that we'd like to see happen. Um, with the, the list of priorities, it's, it's difficult to find time to, to work on that. Um, but the way I see it unfolding is to put out an RFP, um, to, to start to, to look at, um, a consultant putting, putting together a package for that. Uh, it's just that it'll, it'll require, uh, you know, some, some staff time for sure, uh, to put that together and, and shepherd that process. Uh, so with, with the current list of priorities, um, you know, we, we can look at that with, with, uh, budgeting and, and see where that falls. Um, but it is, it is definitely something that, that is important, um, not only for, you know, the, the environmental impact, but, uh, but also just because it, it could represent, um, a significant savings to, uh, the wastewater treatment plants over time with, uh, with energy reduction. Uh, but, you know, I do think that, that we've made some headway, um, with the Tesla battery system. I mean, that's, that's projected to save, uh, somewhere around $45,000 a year, uh, $43,000 or $45,000 a year towards, um, our energy bills. Uh, so, so I do feel like we are making progress right now with that. But it would be, it would be great to see the solar array there as well.
And, and just, uh, I know that year time especially, Andrea was, was taken and very well spent getting us to own the solar array up at the water treatment plant. And that was part of why we shifted, you know, that, that had to come first because we were draining. Uh, you know, we, we had a bad deal going there and I really appreciate all the effort you put into that. It was very successful. So it's understandable. You can't do everything all at the same time. You have to sequence them. So good. Um, if we're done with engineering, I'll just open that up to any other public questions or comments on that? I'm not hearing any. Let's go back to Bob for whatever's next.
Yes, Madge. Um, just by way of observation, just to kind of wrap that discussion up with engineering, I completely concur with, with Brian and the engineering staff. I think a capital improvement program will go a long ways to settling a lot of the priority issues. Uh, you'll also find with your public works director that, uh, a portion of, uh, his salary will probably come out of each project as it. will probably come out of each project as it, uh, is required to, uh, if they all require administration. So that's again another way of spreading those costs out accordingly. Uh, at this time, uh, we'll move along to the police department and call on the chief.
Thank you. Um, as far as our setting of goals, um, when I stepped into this, uh, a few months back, uh, you know, I recognized a, a, a number of challenges that we were facing as an agency. Um, the number of people that have sat at this chair before me, uh, has not helped the stability of the department. Uh, it's also as far as setting what traditional, uh, goals are for, for police departments as far as their performance, you know, increase and decrease in crime, uh, numbers of, uh, arrests, clearance rates, those kinds of things. Um, and then we got hit with COVID last year, so those were all things that we had to, uh, kind of overcome. Uh, we are hoping or hopeful that we're now coming out of, of at least the COVID restrictions that we've been operating under. Uh, so I'm, I'm hopeful this, uh, this year to be able to set some of those traditional performance goals for, uh, our people and to present to you and to the community, uh, so they can see what exactly our officers are doing and what kind of an impact they're having on the quality of life issues, uh, in, in the city. Um, but I also want to add to those, uh, really a, a stat that we haven't been able to capture before or were unwilling to capture before, but that's community contacts, community, uh, oriented, uh, events that we need to be involved in, initiated, uh, you know, or just taking part in, uh, as far as how many people in the community we've been able to reach in a given week, in a given month, uh, and those things. I'm going to incorporate that into our, uh, uh, performance goals, if you will. Um, we want to, uh, one of the things that, that suffered is, kind of tends to suffer. Uh, I want to get up to speed as our evaluations of our employees, the performance evaluations is important for their personnel packages for the timely review of their performance so that they can either improve, uh, or build on, uh, if it's a real positive performance. Um, I also want to make sure that we are in full post compliance, uh, training with, with post and now coming out of COVID, a lot of the classes and trainings, perishable skills training, those kinds of things that are mandated, uh, will hopefully start to resurface and, and we can start sending our, our people to those things again. Uh, main challenge that, you know, we've, uh, had to overcome and are still working on is the staffing issue, um, of, you know, getting bodies to not only come, but to stay. And, uh, I think the, the council has been very supportive, uh, in not only allowing us to leave one way to, uh, get some other positions that would serve as a, as a career ladder for officers that are staying here, um, you know, and allow them to at least have a, um, something to aspire to, something to look forward to, something to work towards. Uh, and that's very important, not only for the improvement, but for the retention aspect of our agency. Um, one of the things that we're also looking at is the, um, giving our facilities some TLC. Uh, if you've never walked our hallowed halls, uh, it's, uh, uh, I mean, it's, you know, it's relatively, we try to keep it relatively plain, but it's, uh, it can get depressing sometimes. Uh, so, uh, you're looking for ways to see if we can get some, uh, maybe some painting or carpeting. I think this carpet is here from the seventies, I'm not sure. Uh, but it's, it's, you know, it, it needs a lot. Um, there's also, I'm, I'm looking at, um, space and security both inside and outside. We're, uh, looking at some, uh, upgraded video systems that we can monitor, not only the front lobby and, and our front parking lot, uh, you know, which we can't really do right now with the system we have in place, um, but make it clearer. Um, we're at twenty-four seven operations, so, uh, you know, sometimes we have people here, uh, in, in the building that would feel better about being here if they could see what's going on in this surrounding area. Uh, so we're looking at that, uh, looking at, uh, you know, really some basic stuff, changing out locks, uh, going to other key systems. I'm looking to see, uh, you know, what the cost would be for a, um, it's called a contact card key for our property room so that you put your card up against it, it lets you in, uh, but it also, more importantly, tracks who's going in, who's going out, dates, times, those kinds of things, uh, which I think are important for at least that, uh, that office. Um, our fleet rotation, uh, which you approved, our leasing program, uh, is underway. We're hoping to get our two new, uh, first two new vehicles, uh, hopefully within a month. Um, and, uh, and the community will start seeing them out, uh, out in the streets. Uh, again, getting our, our people up to, uh, any training opportunities, uh, that can, uh, that come up that we can, uh, that we can send, uh, send them to without impacting our, our deployment. Um, and, uh, just looking at our equipment as well, uh, not only the, the cars, but some of our equipment is, is, it's starting to show a little wear and tear. And so, uh, I want to make sure that if we can, we can, uh, look at that, upgrade it, place it. Um, and, um, I'm also taking a, a good hard look at our, uh, our range, uh, our operations up there. Um, we've had interest from other agencies that would like to use that, uh, and we are interested in letting them use it, um, for price, uh, and we're hopeful to use that to kind of turn it around so we can continue to maintain it, uh, do some upgrades under some lighting that needs to be done up there. Uh, the cover or the, uh, behind the range needs to be changed out every couple of years. Uh, so, uh, those are all things that we're kind of looking forward to and, uh, you know, the big ones, like I said, are staffing, setting some performance goals for people, uh, keeping the people that we get and, uh, creating, uh, one of the things that I really want to do from day one, uh, you know, no matter how long I was going to be here, uh, I thought it was important that, uh, to create a positive work environment, uh, that our people, all of our people wanted to come to work with or come to work too. And, uh, it wasn't one of those, you know, dragging themselves out and I got to go to work. It's, you know, I wanted to replace that with, you know, I'm charged up, I'm going to go to work, I want to do good. And, uh, so that's been, uh, a thing from day one and, uh, keep that rolling. So, um, that's kind of, kind of it. Sorry, do you have any questions?
See, Jared Gonzalez, of course. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Chief, do you have what you need to stay in compliance with the requirement that, uh, you guys? I, I love.
Uh, not yet, not yet. We're, we're still a, yeah, we're still a couple of years out, uh, but I'm looking at systems now that, uh, I keep getting emails and I'm going through Cal Chiefs Association to see what other agencies are doing. Um, but also, you know, does everybody know what RIPA, RIPA is? Okay, it's the, California has the Racial Identity Profiling Act, uh, which all agencies shall be required to produce data, uh, to Department of Justice indicating on every contact, every stop, uh, what was the officer's perception of that individual, uh, as far as race, ethnicity, uh, gender, uh, all of that. Uh, it's basically, uh, a collection of data and, uh, it's gone through other big agencies now. Uh, agencies our size don't have to be in compliance until 2023, I want to say, uh, and, uh, but it's coming, so I want to be ready for that, uh, and, uh, kind of see what everybody else is using, uh, what's going to meet the requirements, uh, and hopefully not be very costly.
Anything else, Jared? No? Okay, uh, Greta?
I just wanted to say, Chief, this is the most comprehensive overview I've heard in two years of your department and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Lozuraga from the council? How about anything from the public? And I am hearing.
One comment I'd like to make, one comment is that banner needs to come down.
What?
The banner behind it needs to come down.
Okay, just because of that, I'm going to muzzle myself.
Very good.
Okay. Uh, do we have any other, um, any other check-ins? Bob Pearl, are you, have we gone through everything or do we have more?
Brian, um, I know you had public works, uh, in the airport was, uh, other than what we've heard from engineering, is there someone that you had thought about covering that?
Yes, Kenan O'Shea wants to talk, uh, to address the council regarding public works in the airport, uh, and he's prepared and he's on.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilman, Mr. Pearl as well, Public Works Maintenance Superintendent Kenan Patrick O'Shea. Um, the department is currently staffed with four dedicated full-time staffers. Um, we can all agree, our city has faced some, and surrounding community as well has faced some challenges this year, many of which have kind of put our department into, you know, damage control and cleanup mode. Um, we've been operating with a failing budget and trying to minimize spending at every opportunity, but it has, uh, limited us in the size of projects we can implement. Definitely one of our main efforts this year was getting the parks open and keeping them available to the public during everything going on, but I think we can all agree that was, uh, that was kind of a victory for the whole community. Um, as we continue to expand as a city and take on new responsibilities, department goals and focus reflect these duties, um, there have been equally vice leadership and improvement. Um, we intend to continue to provide safe, clean, usable facilities, uh, prepare the essentially dormant athletic fields for the upcoming season and improve performance function of our parks. We would also like to maintain and upgrade our streets, trees and infrastructure and aid other departments with their goals and projects. Um, it, I'd also like to mention that some of our equipment and end service vehicles are nearing retirement and we need to start, uh, budgeting to circle up and replace them in the next couple of fiscal years. Um, I think it's probably best to address public works and, and I'll put it back to Paul, uh, Mr. Pearl for a question, and then I'll do the airport after that.
Madge, uh, are there any questions of, uh, of the public works superintendent relative?
Okay, I see Suprema's hand. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Kenan. I think that was a, uh, gives us a good understanding of the different projects that you work on, that if you had, um, some specific needs of, uh, what would help in, uh, help with the workload? I mean, you mentioned, for example, that the vehicles are outdated, um, um, what, any goals, what is it you want the council to keep in mind when we're setting goals, uh, that are specific to, to public works? What do you, what do you want us to plan for?
Well, essentially, I mean, I submitted a list to, uh, to Brian for, for review and hopefully that'll come into play a little more, um, Saturday when we get into the, the specifics. You know, I've, I've identified some projects and some things that I'd like to see make happen that will support, uh, those goals and implementing those, uh, those in the future. Um, as far as what I need from the council is just the continued support that you guys have provided. Um, I, I don't see any, uh, any, any hurdles of that in communication anymore and I think that if we can continue to keep that open, then we'll be able to move things forward as much as the budget and the staff allows. As far as the vehicle flow and the equipment, that's just something that I'm trying to put in everybody's, put on everybody's radar for, for the next couple of fiscal years. We're going to be able to get by with what we have for this year, so I don't want to, I don't want to get anybody too worried about that coming down the pipeline, but we do need to start thinking about that as a, as a goal for the future. Um, right now, we just kind of want to improve the safety and, and the, the form and the function of some of the facilities and kind of get upon some of the maintenance. Um, we just got Main Street, so, you know, we're working around those challenges and the new responsibilities involved in that. There's a lot to learn about, you know, traffic signals and how some of this new equipment, uh, operates, but, um, just continue to support us and, and believe in us and I think we'll be, we'll be just fine.
And, and Greta?
Um, Kenan, in the past, you have mentioned, um, being maybe understaffed in the public works department and I'm wondering if a public works director will, um, fully alleviate that or if you need additional strong arms attached to backs with hinges?
Uh, thank you for that question. Definitely having, having a solid dedicated public works director would, would free myself and, and everybody else that works on the public works, the utility, engineering, to focus on, on these, on boots-on-the-ground projects versus getting, uh, time between administrative duties and, and other, and other responsibilities. It allows us as, as people who are still very connected to the work to be more of a part of those projects. And I, I could concede to definitely taking any more hands if the council is willing to send our way. Um, the more people we have, the more we can do in the community. Our responsibilities continue to grow and we have a lot of property to maintain, but I mean, even just something as simple as adding or bringing back the, uh, seasonal parks position that we have in the past, we need to, uh, some of the extra cleaning and maintenance we've taken on and keeping these parks open during, during the COVID-19. We do a lot of extra sanitizing and a lot of extra, you know, cleanup right now that, uh, an entry-level position would be suited to, to provide those services and the people we have in place now to, uh, to use their skill sets to better the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Any comments from the public? All right, um, back to you, Bob.
Uh, Madge, I, I think that, uh, Ken also wanted to cover the airport.
Oh, yes, of course. And, yeah, Kenan.
Hello again. Um, the airport got some serious attention this year. Uh, we did a, a massive runway resurfacing project, complete with new paint and directional marking, um, new LED runway lights. Um, we had, uh, the Department of Forestry, Tahoe, Elataque crew, residents there for a few months and they did some exterior repairs to the pilot buildings, so the airport's looking, shifting, it's, it's come a long way this last year and to really kind of reflect the efforts that have been put into it. Uh, we got the fuel tank cleaned and cool and sales are kind of picking up with the better weather. Um, so we're just kind of waiting to see what this season brings, but our goals as far as those are just to continue to upgrade the hangars and seek funding for development to increase revenue. Uh, we also plan to work towards compliance goals, benchmark projects identified in the capital improvement plan, which we just refiled this year. Um, some of those projects include like, you know, basic repairs to the, to the airport infrastructure. Um, I just want to point out that the airport has and always has been, uh, a vital component of our, of our EMF system and fire prevention efforts throughout the county and it's our hope to continue to grow that element and improve community awareness to that back. Um, when we have these major events in our, in our community, the airport is very strategic and very vital, so we just kind of want to keep that in the community's, uh, peripheral and, and use that to help, uh, bring awareness to the airport and potentially grow its, its ability to, to generate revenue and sustain itself.
Any questions on that? Right. Bob, we, something?
Yes.
Where are we?
Well, we've got one more to go and that's Uplis. And I imagine that's Scott, if I'm not mistaken. And I imagine that's Scott, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir, Bob. Here I am, still awake. So I just, just a, a quick overview of, you know, the responsibility utilities. Includes, you know, obviously the water, the waste- Sorry, that's cross-traffic. The water plant, the wastewater plant, the water distribution system, the wastewater collection system, you know, it, it's a big undertaking for the city, you know. You don't see or hear from us much. I guess that's a good thing. For the first to find out when something's wrong. You know, these, these, these operators are 24/7. Water and sewer don't stop flowing when everyone goes to sleep. I think the biggest, the biggest obstacle, and it's been touched on multiple times, is the Public Works Director. I don't know if, if council views have seen the org chart, but the biggest void in there, like Kenan touched on, is, it's not just public works, it's utilities, it's engineering. The admin part of that role kind of has, has been absorbed by multiple people. So I wouldn't say sufficient, we're managing, doing our best with the dedicated staff that we have. But overall, you know, we have, we have yearly goals that we try to obtain, you know, ongoing. But I, I think, I think the Public Works Director is a big, is a big void that we're missing here to, to become more efficient. I can feel my time constraint as, from, from both plants. I used to be more hands-on with the operators and on the projects, and I find myself more distant from now, dealing with more the admin part of it. So I just want to throw that out there as, as I think we can come together and be more efficient in, in, in all these departments together with, with one leader. I guess from there, I think more or less, if you have questions, would probably help to fight this.
Any questions from council members? Yes, Jerry?
Scott, this is kind of like a broad question, and can't answer it, or maybe. I, I guess when you formulate your budget, because you include the water and sewer, et cetera. I, I know water has become the big issue. I think all of Minnesota County, and yet I feel that we're probably sitting better than any one area in the county. But I guess with the understanding that what we need to keep that up, I would like to see to the extent that it's necessary. Any more questions? Go ahead.
No, and again, I think, you know, Bob and Brian touched on it too, but that, that Public Works position is, I'm sorry to keep beating down on it, but it was, so let me step back. When I, when this, the city restructured in 15 and 16, and the Utility Superintendent was created, it was in hopes that the Public Works Director, the Utility Superintendent worked together. Prior to that, each sewer and water department had their own supervisor on top of the chief plan operator that they, they only have now. So there's 10 people, 10 positions that, that the Utility Superintendent oversees, plus now the projects. So just, just overall, I, I guess I can't reiterate it enough that it would be very beneficial to the overall health of the Public Works Engineering, Water and Wastewater, to get someone in here that can help facilitate more projects and have that time and understanding of it.
Other, other questions or comments from council? Yes, Greta?
I guess I just want to clarify, Scott. Do you feel that you have enough other people in place that filling that Public Works position would be enough to alleviate those administrative pressures? But that as far as boots on the ground, you have the right people in the right positions, and, and you feel confident about your ability to manage the workload?
Yes, we actually have two, one in sewer and one in water that we're looking to probably fill in the next year that were vacant. So, yeah, again, retaining the institutional knowledge, it's kind of revolving door around here, it's huge. You know, there's times where we reach out to the people real quick and, like J.C. England, for example, for his institutional knowledge. You know, if you don't have that around, it's like, you don't know what's going on. You know, you have to hunt, and it just takes so much more time. But I do, I do believe that we have, and I feel very confident in the operators, in the chief plan operators, they have stepped up their role and, and helped me out tremendously in that position, so to relieve me of the daily operations. Yeah, I believe if we could, we have the dedicated staff who's on the ground. When we fill those other two positions, we'd be fully staffed. If that answered your question?
Yes, thank you. Any other questions from council members?
Yeah, just a quick one. I've been hearing a lot from the community about concerns about the potential for an upcoming drought. And keeping in mind that part of our job is communication with the public and helping to educate them on where the city is at. Do you feel that your department needs more resources in, in the coming year? Do you have concerns around a potential for a drought and the impact it might have on your department? Is there anything that you should know in planning?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's been, honestly, since we got that drought, I think it was 13, 14. It's been a constant request from the Division of Dam Safety for early board installation to capture these early spring rains. It used to be the late spring rains that would fill us up, but now it's more February, March. And I've granted, been granted a request in previous years for as early as February 1st for an earth and dam. They, you know, obviously have concerns, because if you get a big storm comes in to breach the dam, then you have what you had over there, that, that dam failure. And where was that?
Was that over there?
Yeah, over there. So there's a lot of stipulation that comes into that. But we, we always grant the requests, and they've been very good to us in that. But that's how we've been filling up. And every year, right now, we're about, by adding those boards on March 3rd, we got another early installation granted. We're about 90% capacity in our surface rest boards right now. So we're, we're, we're looking good. I think a big part of that, Suprina, is that groundwater management plan and having a backup. I think that's where council could really help spearhead an alternative or supplemental source.
Right, any other questions? And any comments from the public? So, back to you, Bob.
Yes, Madge.
I feel like a TV programmer.
First of all, you know, relative to utilities and water in, in particular, after hearing Scott's indication that right now, after putting those flashboards in, that they're at 50, 90%, I can tell you, coming from a different part of the state, we certainly wish that we were any, near that. And to a certain degree, the comment about a groundwater plan is, is certainly worth taking stock in, because you have a, a, a good resource, and, and certainly you want to do what you need to protect it. In terms of wrapping up this portion, first of all, I would like to compliment Brian and the staff. I think they've done a really good job of discussing with you what the issues are. And I think in terms of background, it's been tremendously helpful. And I also want to compliment you, any individual council members. I thought the questions were great. And assisted the department folks in going into a little bit more detail and brought out some additional information. So I think all of that worked really well. I think, you know, as, as you look to these candidate goals, you've received some additional information. There certainly is some additional food for thought. It may lead you to be modifying some of those candidate goals before you turn them in tomorrow afternoon. Before I conclude my remarks, I just wanted to go back to the council. You've heard a lot, there's been a lot to digest. But is there any challenges that you perceive or opportunities that you didn't hear covered with the presentations tonight?
Bob, I just want to, it looks like Andy has a response.
Andy?
Yeah, if I, if I could, Mayor Schramm, Council. As far as the first unfunded liability is concerned, I did look those numbers up for you. The current liability, as it stands for the upcoming fiscal year, is just over $9.8 million. And that covers all, all four of your pension plans, which are the two classic plans that you have for police and miscellaneous, and you two PECF plans that you have for police and miscellaneous. The amount of the unfunded liability payment on a citywide basis that was paid in the current fiscal year for 2021 is just over, just under $885,000. Of that amount, 66% accrued to the general fund, okay? So some of, a lot of that costs is partitioned out to other funds, rightfully so. When you look at the upcoming year for 2122, we know what these numbers are. It'll go up by about $100,000 to $991,000, okay? Again, 66% is expected to accrue to the general fund. So that's about a $66,000 increase, so there's a $100,000 total increase to the general fund. However, when you look at fiscal 2223, they estimate that the unfunded liability will drop back down to $886,000, similar to what it is in the current fiscal year. So it'll drop down by $100,000. This tells me that there are certain components of the unfunded liability that are on a downtrend in terms of their amortization cycle, and the costs are beginning to decrease for those, for those, for those amounts. When I look at the, at the, at the ongoing costs, it doesn't change too much from there. You don't have any large spikes that are expected to accrue in the unfunded liability in, in the out years. But having said that, CalPERS is very volatile. And if you expect CalPERS to not make their 7% annual discount rate, those costs are likely to go up. Another element of concern, actually of interest, is the fact that so far this year, and keep in mind that we're almost nine months through the fiscal year, CalPERS has earned, and I'm hearing this, okay, I have not verified this, but I am hearing that CalPERS has earned between 10% and 14% on their investment pool in the current year. And that's just because of a very strong stock market. This economy is rebounding, trying to recover from COVID. And especially, especially that equity market, the stock market is screaming, and continues to scream at this point. And that's a big portion of CalPERS' pool. So I don't see a lot of huge concerns as it relates to CalPERS. But keep in mind, the biggest unknown concern is whether or not they can continue to make that 7% discount rate. If they do lower that discount rate to something lower than 7%, your unfunded liability will go up. So it's going to increase to the extent they want to lower that rate, and there are hostives and discussions about potentially lowering that rate. So it is a challenge for the city moving forward. We'll continue to monitor it. The next actuales report will come out in August of next year, or of this year. And, you know, we'll bring it back to the council and let you know what that looks like. And then, of course, as we go through the fiscal year and understand what CalPERS is truly earning on their portfolio, we'll report that back as well.
Does your, the budget projections that you gave us near the beginning of this meeting, does that reflect? It does include, obviously, the, our annual share of that unfunded liability, but it doesn't adjust it for the potential for it to go up by 100,000? Is that correct?
So what you have in the next fiscal year is a 2% aggregate increase in all expenditures combined. I just added 2%. So that's between 100 and 120,000. So the 66,000 has to come out of that 100,000 to 120,000.
Along with everything else, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, Andy, that was some really useful information. So are, are there any additional questions of me or any, any of the staff from the council at this point? If not, again, I'd like to thank you all, and I'll turn it back to the mayor for adjournment, but thank you for taking this amount of time. I think it was well worthwhile. I know that you'll be working on finalizing your candidate statements over the next, and I look forward to seeing you all on Saturday morning. Thank you. Madge?
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you all the staff who gave wonderful, very elucidating presentations. Thank you so much. Yeah, we, we should do this more often, I think, because it's really important overview of what's going on with the, down at the nitty-gritty level of our, of our staff. So I wanted to make one, one announcement, just I'll send to Kathy to send out a link to a Channel 3 short mayor's report that I filmed on Friday. It's about 20 minutes long, and it's just trying to, you know, communicate to the public partly about this goal-setting process and kind of some of the key things we have done and are planning to do. And if you want to watch it for 20 minutes, that's, that'll be available, and it'll be on Channel 3. So I'll send that out. And I think we are ready to adjourn, and I see it is eight, almost 8:40. And we are adjourning this special meeting of the city council. Thank you, everybody. Oh, yes, Greta?
I just wanted to thank you, Kenan Patrick O'Shea and Dusky, who called out their Irish heritage slochay.